All right, we can start now.
Good afternoon. It is 4:30 in the afternoon, January 16, 2019. If you're legal, I invite you to please stand and join with me the pledge before we begin our council meeting. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are we rolling?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, good afternoon. It is now 4:30 sharp, so we shall begin our council meeting with a roll call, please. Brad Hent?
Here.
Sean Brewster?
Here.
Pete Hamel?
Here.
Greg Gills?
Here.
Tom Eggers?
Here.
Roll call, please. The first item on our agenda is approving the agenda. There are no changes that are to be made, that need to be made. So with that said, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please. Hamel?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Second on the agenda, this is our public format, public comments. If anybody has a public comment, you are welcome to come up, share your name, and any comment that you would like to share with the council. There are none at this time, so we'll move forward into the consent agenda. Any questions regarding the minutes, the summary list of claims, financial reports, and the approving of the fire department volunteer, Dennis, otherwise known as Daniel Deeds?
Make the motion to approve consent agenda.
Support.
There's no discussion then? May I have a roll call, please? Gills?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
It's pretty easy, Dennis, yes. Welcome to the fire department. Thank you. Thanks for being here, too. We have no old business, so we'll go into new business. The first item on the agenda is discussing the Crossroads North Business Park. And Kurt, would you mind coming up and sharing with us the overview of where we're at and where we are heading with that?
Yep, you bet. So it should have been supplied in your packet, kind of a memo that staff and we kind of reviewed to put together for your information here today. You know, as we bought this ground a year ago, we finally get to the point where we can consider infrastructure improvement. So that was a long process in dealing with DOT and getting a traffic impact study and letter compiled. And then, once you get that information to DOT, they have their own timeline and process of doing things as well. So we're finally to the stage of recommending of an opportunity to get the project out for bid. And we got an opportunity here this afternoon as far as a recommendation of a Phase One to essentially get the project started. So Phase One is what we're looking at is to get into the Crossroads North Drive all the way to the north side of Lot 1. And it's also including in Phase One would be a turn lane that's not being required by DOT but being recommended by DOT. Now, we had some extensive conversation with staff. Is this something we should consider? We talked to La Bochum, too, with the Chief of Police, and Todd and I, and Sam and Ange looked at it, too. We certainly think that this should be a part of this phase because they're not necessarily requiring it now, but since they're recommending it, at some point, they're probably going to come, "We need to put this turn lane in." So obviously, costs are probably going to be significantly higher at that time. They're going to be on their time schedule. We all know about trying to find funding in a short amount of time. It's not fine easy. So we're recommending that turn lane as part of Phase One as well. So the total cost, as you can see, is for Phase One is about $868,000. And working with Ange, our funding availability as of today is just under $900,000. So we do have the current funding available based on bonding for this project back when we purchased the ground last year to essentially pay for Phase One right now. So we would be able to do that. It's going to depend on what bids come in at as well, but we feel comfortable with the contingencies and stuff built in that we should be okay there. So... And then, the other thing I'd like to mention is, you know, Phase Two, which would be the additional infrastructure, which would be everything north of Lot 1, including the granular turnaround on the very north end, and then a water loop that they're proposing as far as Runger to help with the water supply down the road, too. We'd like to keep that front and center as far as making that maybe a condition for next year if we can find the funding availability to fund for that project and complete the whole project within a two-year timeframe. So ideally, we like to do everything in Phase One, but just with the financing, the budget constraints and where we're at, we're just recommending that Phase One as of right now. And Todd and Sam, if you guys have anything, based on Ange, based on our conversation, feel free to add any additional comments.
I think I saw the DOT out there measuring, which was kind of nice because I know they don't recommend it, and who knows, maybe someday they will. But seeing now what the traffic is in that area, and it's only going to become more, I think it would be smart of us to just include that like you've recommended in.
Yeah. And to your point, too, Mayor, it's going to provide an extra safety precaution as well because without that, in and out, ingress and egress is going to be a little more tricky.
Right. One other question, and it may not be relevant to this, but as we're doing this, talking with DOT and doing all the studies, too, eventually addressing the speed, which we can get into that another time, maybe, or do you want to tell me now? No? Okay, good. All right.
Todd and Chief Baucham and I have been in conversations with DOT, and there's a brief summary of it in the report for today's packet. But we did ask, we did let them know our concern, our continued concern on the 55 mile an hour zone that begins just west of Taco John's, and there's been a number of close calls and accidents there, and it really needs to be addressed. So they have agreed to do a speed study, and that will happen sometime this spring. So hopefully, they'll make some changes soon. And I think that's another justification for us to follow DOT's advice on the turn lane because then, you know, I think that also buys us goodwill as we're asking them to look at our other problems that we see as issues.
Sure. That's just something that regularly comes up is, you know, the speed. And I know we've addressed it before with the DOT, so I thought while we're all talking, so I'm anxious to see what that report would come back as.
That'll be good. And then, the other thing that's happening or will be happening this summer is traffic counts. Our areas due for traffic counts again. Now, we probably won't have those results until '20, but I think we'll see, I think Kurt and I would both agree, we'll see substantial increase over what they were.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Questions, counsel, for Kurt, and the presentation, the overview and the recommendation that's before us?
I guess you did get diagrams laid in front of you of the turn lane. And I'd maybe like to point out, that's more than just a standard turn lane. That's one that gets traffic off of the traveled roadway so that people going onto the roadway actually are not blocked by the right turn traffic. That should be portrayed in those diagrams.
Yeah, it looks like it's about 1,000 foot long.
So, and honestly, that may narrow up a little bit. That was initial conversations with DOT, and I believe they'll allow it to be slightly shorter than that, but ultimately, that's their determination.
Either way, that's going to slow up traffic westbound with people wanting to...
But it also makes it a much safer turning area.
Right, absolutely. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Todd, just for a point of reference, would this be substantially similar to what they did on 18 by Sandborne on the intersection of 59 North?
I don't know that I've been through there since it's redid. I guess the point being is your right turn traffic is maybe...
It's taken off of the traveled portion.
Correct. It's maybe another 15 feet, 10 to 15 feet further off of the roadway from the edge line instead of just being right outside of the edge line. You can see the hashed out mark in the first diagram there. I think that distance is almost of the width of a lane once you get to the actual intersection.
So provides a good view for those turning out of Crossroads Drive North coming on 18?
Correct, so they can still see the upcoming traffic.
They'll be offset a little bit.
Especially semi-truck traffic.
Correct.
And one thing I would note, too, you know, as we're thinking through some of this stuff, you know, as far as Phase Two, based on cost estimates and what we're looking at, if we wanted to do the whole project, including the granular turnaround and the water loop coming out of Runger, we're looking at about a $247,000 gap right now as far as complete financing for the project. So that's the deficit as far as doing the whole thing in Phase One. So we sat and talked about that at length, and we just, we can't recommend that without the financing available today. But as far as looking forward to next year, what would we have to look at for completing the project? Now, it may be, cost estimates may go up, you know, a year from now, but that's about what we're looking at to finish the project a year from now. So...
All right. Thank you, Kurt. Okay, any further discussion? And if not, we would need a motion to approve Phase One of the Crossroads North and Business Park.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Thank you again, Kurt.
Yep, you bet.
I will ask for any questions, comments, discussion, or I take a roll call, just to make sure. All right, may I have a roll call, please? Gills?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, next, under new business, is the general obligation capital loan note for $650,000 for emergency services equipment. This is a resolution fixing the date of February 6 for a meeting on the proposition to authorize a loan agreement and the issuance of a note to evidence the obligations of the city thereunder. The proper legal terminology that we need to use. This is saying we are setting February 6, 2019, at 4:30 in the afternoon for a public hearing on authorizing the loan agreement. Questions regarding setting that date and time?
Approve, uh, move that we move forward with that?
Is that your motion? Thank you, Brad. Okay, thank you. Again, this is setting that hearing. Then, when we have that hearing and approval, then it keeps moving forward, and you'll have more. Thank you. You got it. And I appreciate your reports that can have layman's terms for us so we understand it and the media can understand it better. Thank you. May I have a roll call, please? Brewster?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Okay, then, letter C, under new business, wastewater treatment plant. We have a pay order number eight, and that is in the amount of $498,148.34. Project is going well. Thank you. Any questions regarding the payment?
Move to accept.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. And a roll call, please. Eggers?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
And then, you'll see next, under the wastewater treatment plant, change order number six. This is in the amount to increase $20,818. See, we have stairs for $22,508, correct, Todd? And then, part two of the change order is a deduct of $1,690 to remove waterproofing from the channel walls of the UV building.
That is correct.
Sounds like I know what I'm talking about, but would you care to elaborate?
Yeah, if you'd like me to. So the stairs on the north side of the SBR, essentially, when we looked at initial design, we looked at where do we need stairways coming off of the XPR structure, and we did not see a reason to put one on the north side, so we did not include it in the original contract. Now, as we're learning more about the new facility and looking at operational things moving forward, we've realized that that was an error. We should have included a stairway on the north side. Operational-wise, without the stairway on the north side, it's going to be a pain, and we're going to be doing a lot of walking all the way back around, and it's just a time loser. Is there a cheaper way to do it? Absolutely there are, but I don't think there are better ways. That's why you have the requests that you have in front of you. I mean, we could hang a ladder, for instance, but I don't think somebody climbing up and down a ladder over the life of the plant is a good idea when we could have a stairway there now. So that's why the stairway is there. The waterproofing, essentially, the structural engineer included waterproofing on the exterior of the UV channel, but the interior of the UV channel carries water anyway. There's really no advantage to have it waterproof, so we asked it to be removed from the contract.
Okay.
That's what the two things are. I'll answer any other questions you may have.
In a nutshell, thank you for that. Because I was wondering, we wouldn't have missed stairs, but I'm glad that you explained that.
Yeah, and that's bigger than the engineer. I mean, staff was highly involved in those reviews, and we, at that time, we actually talked about a stairwell there and then decided, well, don't put it in just to put it in. Well, now...
Sure.
Now, we're wishing we would have put it in.
Absolutely.
We're in good shape in the contract. I mean, there will be, what, $4.5 million into the contract, and this will put us, if you approve it, will put it a plus $28,000 above contract. And there's some other line items that we're actually running well under, so we're in good shape.
Good to hear. Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve change order number six?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. Discussion at all further. May I have a roll call, please? Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, under new business, resolution establishing a crossroads pavilion maintenance and capital improvement fund and directing inclusion of a 13.5 cent levy in the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget draft. By approving this resolution, then we can include that in our budget draft, and then we can get into further discussion at that time as to whether we keep it or not. But this gives us the opportunity to put it into the budget workshop to see what that would look like. Good explanation, I think. Thanks. Care to elaborate? Any comments, questions, counsel?
I do have a comment. Will there be time for public input on that?
Yes.
Because I fielded a couple of phone calls about wanting public input and a couple against it.
Yes. So, and that's something I had talked with Sam about, too, was when we move this forward, if we were to move this forward today, it allows Angela the opportunity to put it, like I said, into our budget workshop so we can see what those numbers would look like. We wouldn't want to put it in there without a resolution, you know, instructing her to do that so we can see what the numbers are. I see at budget time an opportunity for public to share comments, questions, et cetera, and give us the chance to vet what our community is thinking, feeling, et cetera, because it can always be taken out. Would you care to elaborate at all?
You did well.
Right on, money?
You did well.
Thanks, Sam.
So just so I understand... There's a public interest in part of the budget process.
Yeah, thank you. Yes.
The discussion that takes place at the budget meeting, the decision is made there or it comes up as a point of discussion down the road. I mean, we have it in the budget, but it's official at that point, or it goes to further meetings where it actually is adopted?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So the way that this resolution was written, Greg, is it's written so it would create a fund called the Pavilion Capital Improvements and Maintenance Fund. And then, it directs the clerk to include the 13 and a half cent levy in the draft budget. Now, the other option would be to, could simply continue the resolution itself to the budget hearing and discuss it there. This just gives an opportunity tonight for additional discussion by council and the community. This is also a recommendation by the Pavilion Board as a whole. So there's a couple of ways to approach this, and Angie and I discussed it, and we both felt more comfortable with having council direction to fill in that blank for the first time than to do it without having council authorization ahead of time.
So just to be clear to those that are wondering, we're approving now to include it as part of the discussion. If we are not approving it here...
No, we're not.
It will...
Right, as the budget draft.
Have it to do...
So when the budget draft comes up, and this levy is put in there just to see what it looks like, that's what this resolution is approving, for us to put it into the draft to see what it would look like.
Put differently, when is it a done deal?
Exactly.
When the budget is adopted, and then it would start on July 1 with the new fiscal year.
So we have our two budget workshops?
Right. And a public hearing.
And a public hearing. And our budget workshops are January 29 and 30, correct? 29 and 30?
Right, and the workshops aren't open.
Yes.
So there's really three?
Yes.
So actually...
And then, it comes again to the council meeting, February 6?
Well, it looks like...
I don't know, what's our date?
Per this timeline, the final public hearing and council approval is March 6.
Thank you. March 6.
March 6 is the actual public hearing, but there would be opportunity for discussion at the January 29 and 30 workshops.
Right. And even in between them, anytime someone would like to come in and share comments, whether verbally or in writing, absolutely. It gives them plenty of time to come up and hear from our residents.
Then I would move that we approve this resolution.
I'll second.
Any further discussions or questions?
The only thing I think that should be said is that the board pretty much was concerned that the same thing would happen with the pavilion that happened to our former indoor pool that ended up being torn down for lack of maintenance, and thought that we ought to try and plan ahead to preserve the quality of that particular building.
Is there depreciation built into the budget now?
Not to my knowledge.
No. No. Angie says no. Okay. And it was unanimous, the Pavilion Board was unanimous on recommending that?
We have a new facility that's very nice, and I'm sure when that pool was built, it was very nice, too, and they decided not to maintain it, and we ended up tearing it down. I don't, we're just trying to try and segregate something to say, this is specifically set aside for that purpose. And that's why we recommend it.
Yeah, I agree with everything Pete says, and I'll just add that this represents a more forward way of looking at our fiscal responsibilities as a city, too. So I'm anxious to talk about this more during the workshop as well.
I agree.
And it's a provision that happens to be in the state code that allows to have that set aside.
Thank you, Pete. Any other comments? Okay, may I have a roll call, please? Hamel?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, next, under old, or excuse me, new business, line E, we have pay order number two for the Floyd Industrial Park. That is in the amount of $264,227.47. 74 cents. Thank you, Todd.
Make the motion to approve. Support.
Thank you. If there's no discussion, may I have a roll call, please? Brewster?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Thank you. Then, going into reports, we'll hear the city manager's report, an updated budget agenda comments, before we get into our workshop with the ambulance discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have anything to add to my report other than what's in your packets, so if it's all right, I can go to the budget agenda items.
Sure, absolutely.
So in front of you is the new draft. It's changed a little bit, but fundamentally, it's still about the same. We have a review of mayor council goals at the very beginning of the budget, and that will consist of, I had individual discussions with each of you and wrote out those goals, and that's been, that will be part of the budget documentation that you and the media and the public will have access to. And also, this is very important, is the 2017 goal setting session. That report will also be in the budget, and that specifically talked about a number of revenue items. After that, we'll have the department presentations. What will be different in the budget this year is we'll have a memo from each of the departments explaining their requests, and it's an opportunity to share their vision with you. And so there will be brief presentations from each of the departments. There won't be PowerPoints or reading the memos. It'll just be hitting the highlights and then standing for questions. Biggest part of the first day of the meeting will be the city clerk's section, and we'll have a fair amount of discussion on the levy and revenues and expenses. So, and then the next day, we'll continue where we left off, and then towards the end of that, we'll have a presentation from Mid-American Energy and Mark Reinders, and the discussion point will be a franchise agreement. And they will present that concept, and we can discuss it further at that meeting.
Great. Thank you. All right. The next, council, any comments that you'd like to share now before we get into our workshop with the ambulance and all that discussion? Anything we'd like to share now? Thank you, anything? All right. So then, we will, does anyone need a little break before we get into our workshop? All right, we're going to keep moving right along. Everyone is welcome to stay, but we're now going to go into a discussion that's been taking place here, there, and everywhere regarding Archer and the situation with their ambulance, et cetera. And we are going to go over a proposal from the city of Archer. We'll also hear from our attorney and city manager regarding a 2080 agreement and direction on bidding for the Archer ambulance. So I welcome Sam to take the lead on this as we get into our discussion.
Well, thank you, Mayor. We have good representation tonight from three communities, and we have Archer, Sandborne, and Primgar represented, and Richard and Bill, if you don't, my friends from Archer, if you don't mind, would you like, would you guys like to start off with your proposal, and then we can go from there?
Yes. And if you don't mind, whenever you come up to the podium, share your name so that we can have that on the recording and in the minutes.
Oh, Richard, everybody knows.
Thank you, Richard.
Keith Speller. Yes. Say, before I start, before I start, I've got to tell you this, is that I'm going to assign a job to one of you, so be careful now. Is, a while ago, I was a guest speaker at a program, and my wife was sitting down front, and my time was just about up, and my wife went like this. And I thought, oh, I have one more minute, yes. Oh, and then my minute was up, and she went like this. And I thought, I have two more minutes. Yes, I got my two more minutes. And then she went like this, and I said, wow, this is great. I have three more minutes. So at lunch, I said, Miriam, how did you do this, this, and this? How did that happen for these more minutes? And she said, no, no, you had three great opportunities to sit down. I said, yes, dear, I love you, too. So I need one person that's going to hold their finger up, that I'll get the hint, you know? Maybe Greg, that could be you, because I trust you, you know? Like, there you go, that's it. Oh, my. Yeah, say, first, I want to say thank you to Sam for inviting us here today, and then I think a really big, important thing to us in Archer and everywhere is thank you to all the EMS service people, the ambulance people. You know, you guys work very, very hard with really not a lot of thanks sometimes. And you come out in the middle of the night when it's not nice, and it's hard, and we thank you all for that very much. And not just Sheldon, but Primgar and Sandborne also for your guys, and also for the past Archer people also. And I have a thanks on here to Sam for coming to two meetings. He should have got a raise or a gold star for sitting through Mondays, I tell you what. So that's a recommendation for Sam right there. And for Pete coming to that meeting?
Oh.
Yeah, thank you, too. That was, yeah, you get a gold star, too. I don't know if you can get a raise or not, Pete. We'll try, you know? And when Archer had the unfortunate situation of having to shut down the ambulance service, we were left with a lot of hard assets or equipment. So Jared and Kevin came, and they were very kind. They sorted, cleaned, and so we donated all the equipment out to other services. And we thought, we want to help all our surrounding communities. So it was from backboards to everything you can think of went out, and we really liked that a lot. We weren't interested in selling it. We're interested in giving it away and to bless people, there's a great word, just to bless our community. And then we were left with an ambulance. And during a city council meeting, we tried to figure out what to do with it and on and on because it's a beautiful ambulance and very expensive, has a power cut in it, so we decided to put it out on sealed bids. We thought that was the best way to do that. So we did that on sealed bids, and then they closed the 28th of February, and then we have the right to accept and reject all bids. But having said that, we would like to continue collaboration with everyone, Primgar, Sandborne, Sheldon. And we appreciate that because, you know, Because a few years ago, that was signed, and countywide, and that was a great agreement. And so we thought, how could we financially be a part of that agreement? And that's just a good question, and we've wrangled with that question. And so at the city council meeting, we have come up with a really good solution that we really like, and we hope that Sheldon, Primgar, and Sandborn will also, like, I'm trying to decide who to read it off of. I'm gonna read it off of Sam's email, 'cause he did a great job on it. How's that? The Archer City Council's offering, we figured, let's take $3,000 out of our budget and set that money aside for EMS service only, period. And then we would make a $350 donation, that we thought that was the best term to use for that. When Primgar, Sandborn, or Sheldon comes to a call in Archer, that would go to a point of capital reimbursement for that. Now, one of the questions I've had from a lot of people in the community is, how many calls are there to Archer? Well, with 120 people and half of them gone, being winter visitors, it's not very many, and that's it. And so in one of the run sheets that I have here, from Sheldon, we had three calls to Archer on this sheet. I think there's been a total of 10, is that correct? Yes, 10. And not to sound rude or anything, but that person has passed away now, so we're not talking about a lot of calls and a lot of runs, we're just not. Another issue that was brought to my attention, which I think is a good point, is sometimes people in Archer, and Bill, you can add to this if you want, do just take whoever it is to the hospital on their own. And I think everyone has that right to do that, and I think that's important, because a person came in today and said, Richard, I doctor in Orange City, if I wanna go to Orange City, can I go to Orange City? Well, in a small town, you know, we have Sandborn, Primgar, Sheldon all around, so we have those needs to look at also, not just directed towards one place. So having said that, that's what we thought, and that was approved by the city council to set aside $3,000 in a fund, and then create who to come first, the first call for Jared's sake, and then the second call, and then the third call, so it's one, two, three. So if it was in Archer, we would call whoever we designate first to come, if they are not available, the second to come, and then the third to come. And then we would reimburse whatever term we wanna add to that $350 to that city, and then we would cap that amount at $3,000, because that would be fair. So if our runs continue the way they are, we won't get anywhere near what we're looking at. And we thought that would be a good proposition to help and be a part of that agreement, yeah, but be financially a part of that agreement. So that's what Archer approved at our city council meeting the other night. And Mike, did you wanna add anything to that? Mike, was there?
I believe that's the gist of it. $3,000 total available, so for instance, if there was 10 calls in a year, then the reimbursement amount would be 300 rather than 350, by way of example.
Yeah.
But if there were two, it would not be 1,500.
No. No, no. So we throw that out for your consideration, and also consideration of Primgar and Sandborn. I want to say that the people in Archer, you know, over this term of six months, has been quite a bit of turmoil, and our goal is to create peace and collaboration and working together, and we've seen a lot of that, and we just so appreciate that. And anytime we have a discussion, I firmly believe is that, let's just keep the positive, let it be neutral, and then just, you know, the negative, it's fine, just put it over here and let it go, you know? And that's just really what I think, okay. And then I'm gonna really get into hot water here, but a pastor came and talked to me about this, in fact, and that, interesting, and he said, I'm gonna tell you something, Richard. I thought, okay, tell me. Good heavens, you sound like my wife, you know? And he said, I encourage you with this, and I just love this, so I hope I don't get in too much trouble, but he said, beloved, let us love, we'll love one another, for love is of God, and whosoever loveth is born of God. And I thought, isn't that true? And that's what we do as ambulance people, and I've been an EMTP paramedic for 20 years, you know, I've seen it all, I've been there, delivered two babies. One year, they came and got me in a blizzard and a snowmobile, and out we went, 'cause why would a baby not come during a blizzard, you know? It's just a normal thing, you know? So I've been there, done that, understand all of it, and seen that, and so we totally understand where everybody's at. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. And do we wanna go over the 208E agreement before we, that's gonna be our next step? Micah, Sam?
If we could see if Primgar and Sandborn?
Each department, sure, absolutely. Yep, go ahead. Wood, Sandborn, or Primgar? Who's all here? I don't even know who's all here. And you, Primgar? Sandborn? We have Archer, and I'm, hello, my lady, I'm not sure. And you're from where? Sandborn. Okay, wonderful. So would anybody from Primgar or Sandborn like to share any comments with us at this time as well? The mic is open, forum is open? Thank you.
I think it was stated by our councilman, Smith, at Archer the other night, that Primgar just wants to be available to help anyway, that Archer wants us to help, so we're, you know, we're open to any suggestions they have, and Primgar's ready to help support them.
Wonderful, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't get the name. I'm sorry, can I get your name for the record?
Kurt Edwards, K-U-R-T.
K-U-R-T Edwards, thank you, sorry about that, thank you. And Sandborn, any comments from Sandborn? Okay. I think we're all in agreement that we all wanna work together and help each other out, and thank you, Richard. I just, I could listen to you speak for a while. So, yeah, yep, absolutely.
Jared, I have a question for you. So, from your perspective as EMA director for the county, would you have a recommendation to us in terms of if we just pick a city to go first and then rotate it every couple of months? What do you see from your experience? Just, I see Kevin, maybe Kevin can help us with this one.
Good question. So Jared Johnson with the Bryan County EMA. So on our side, on the dispatch end, it's gonna be easier if we have one city listed as primary agency, and then within our dispatch program, and we can list an other agency, which could be Sandborn or Primgar. If we have a tertiary, that'll be fine as well. It'd just be communicating with the dispatcher what the plan's gonna be. If this town's primary, if they're not available, paging out the secondary, if they're not available, paging out the tertiary, and going from there. The map itself, depending on which city's listed as primary, that's gonna affect the map, 'cause on our end, right now, you know, the majority of the city limits, Sheldon's been the backup, part of the city limits, east of Oriole, have been Sandborn. If Primgar would be primary, we would have to change the map to bring up the rural territory and then also incorporate the city limits into that map. But overall, what I've been seeing throughout the whole county, we're using our contingency plan all the time. Where an agency's out of service, if they're not available, we're paging out another town to come and assist. That's becoming a norm for us, each town's been helping each other out, which has been great. So, but yeah, for us on the 911 end, it's gonna be easier if we just list one as primary, include that in the 208E, and not have something that switches every three to six months or annually, unless in the 208E, the 208E has a defined term of a year or three years, and it could be revisited at that time.
So you would be okay with a, for instance, a three-year agreement that provides for a change or rotation annually? In other words, town A's primary year one, town B is primary year two, and town C is primary year three, or not?
I would rather just have it set the same for each of those years. Each time we would change the map, it would incorporate cost on our end, on the 911 side to.
It wouldn't require a change of the map, would it, other than the first year to get the?
It would incorporate a cost to change the 911 program on our side, 'cause like right now, when a call comes in, the dispatcher doesn't have to think about who exactly is getting paged out. Once they enter in the address, it pulls up, this is the ambulance service, this is the fire department, this is the police department responsible for that district, and then they just page them out.
Okay, so, let me see if I can get on the same page as you. Right now, the city of Archer is basically divided, the city itself is divided into three.
Yep.
Would it be possible for the board to revisit the map, make it so Archer is one area, and then that particular area would, you wouldn't change the map every year, other than the first year, to get Archer's one territory?
That's a good question. That'd be a question for our GIS provider, GeoKite. The street spans, it wouldn't take as much programming on our end. Some of the cost is just having a staff member go in and then re-changing our emergency service number to show who's primary this year from this year. 'Cause like right now, the city limits are, we can, there are towns, we have a separate emergency service number for Sheldon city limits, so it shows, you know, Sheldon PD, Sheldon EMA, Sheldon Fire, Sheldon Ambulance, and once you go outside, Sheldon Ambulance, Sheldon Fire, Sheldon EMA. That's something I could look at, it's a good question. The rural territory lines have been of question as well, which I did have, did meet with Rachel, the O'Brien County Attorney, to discuss, Sheldon has an ordinance for if we would modify the rural lines, correct? Having, city of Sheldon would also have to approve any changes in rural territory lines. So we'd have to revisit that, but yeah, there's some other changes that we wanna make in the meeting. There is one section west of Primgar that includes a dairy farm, that it would be more beneficial for Primgar to respond to that area than Sandborn at this time. So there's some changes we wanna make to the map, and since we're having discussion over the map.
Got a question, just for simplicity, why haven't you just leave Archer the way it is? You know, and those people that are on, go with Sheldon, and the people on the other side go with Archer, and you can still, it isn't gonna change what you're doing now.
This map, that's who would be dispatched if they're available, if not, then it would go?
Cost to the county, 'cause Sheldon and Archer, or Sheldon and Sandborn are gonna take most of the city limits of, so just leave it as it is?
That's an option.
You know, and if Sandborn can't take it, then vice versa, and we'll cover each other.
'Cause yeah, I, the way that's set up right now, yeah, if one town's listed as primary, it could very easily, you know, if, you know, looking at Sandborn or Primgar, if Primgar, Sandborn are assisting each other out over a weekend, and there's a call, you know, it could be either one, so based on their proposal of distributing those funds based on, you know, who responds, number of calls, I see it easier that way than just having a fixed rate to one entity per year.
Brad, was your question, was it keeping the map as it is, but then whoever responded would still receive the reimbursement as proposed by Archer?
Yeah.
Okay. So there still would be some type of agreement?
Agreement, yep.
All right. And the map would stay the same, it's just a question of who's gonna be number two backup and number three backup?
Yeah, just leave them, the east side, Sandborn, Sheldon, Primgar, however, and the west side, Sheldon, Sandborn, Primgar. Simplest way to do it, 'cause you're gonna divide the money out to whoever takes the call anyway.
And then I do wanna just clarify, so the money would just be for city limit calls? So if there's a rural call, there's not money associated with a rural call? So I wanna make sure that's defined. So I did, last year, the 10 calls, there was two rural out of the 10, so eight were within the city limits to a rural.
Think of that, I really would like to see the county take the funding that they gave Archer and divide it between the three communities that are covering Archer's territory. I think that's fair. I think the other communities, I think, would agree also. 'Cause we all have added, we have costs of running an ambulance. I would really like to see in the agreement that the $3,000 get divided equally at the end of the year. If Sheldon has three calls, if Sandborn has six calls, and Polina, or Primgar has one calls, we divide it 60, 30, 10, and then everybody gets equal base off the amount of calls they take, rather than up to, you know, the 3,000. You're gonna give the $3,000 up for, you're gonna set it aside for ambulance service. We other towns have expenses to operate an ambulance. I think that would be fair. I think we've had a conversation similar with Sandborn about this, and I think they would be in agreements with this also, just divided up equally amongst the calls at the end of the year.
Well, you sort of answered the question, the color-coded map that we have now, those red lines, is that the rural, I mean, that is Archer rural?
Yeah, that's the emergency service number district, yeah. So that red outer line, that's gonna stay the same, 'cause Archer Fire is still in existence. What's gonna happen is, you know, the green subdivision for Sheldon, orange for Sandborn, yellow for Primgar. Eventually, those will have their own emergency service numbers, which has happened in other areas throughout the county. So it'll say, so it'll, the new emergency service number could be 4495 is Archer Fire, Sheldon Ambulance, O'Brien County Sheriff's Office. 4497 would be Sandborn Ambulance, Archer Fire, O'Brien County Sheriff's Office.
Okay. And then this $350 per call thing, is that over and above what the patient gets charged? I mean, we write off a lot, I mean, every quarter, we're writing off a bunch of calls, and so I'm assuming there's a, patient gets a bill, is that right?
There's two different types of charges. One would be the individual's fee, like, it's basically a doctor's bill in a sense, in a sense, and the other one is a fee to the city or from Archer.
Okay. So, Richard, you get, you need an ambulance, you live in town, I assume? You get taken to the hospital. How does that get billed out now, or under this new agreement? How would that get billed out?
The way the billing stands now, and I have a copy of Sheldon's billing sheet, 'cause I wanted to really document how the billing is and the expenses. The process is, as I understand it, is if I have a call, say, and I end up going to the hospital, that Sheldon bills my insurance. In about four more weeks, they'll bill Medicare, but they bill my insurance now, and then, or Medicare gets billed, and then from there, if it's not paid, then I will pay that charge. And what we're proposing with, our proposal is, in addition to that, we will pay an extra $350. So it would be more money added to the pot than for that call.
Greg, we actually do that now with Boyden, when we have to assist them with, like, a paramedic assist, we actually bill the city themselves, and then we also.
And what is that amount?
$250.
And we do that already, and the reason we went 350 is because you thought, we thought you have a
And we knew that already. And the reason we went 350 is because you thought, we thought you have a little further to go. And just as the point of adding more money to the pot, we just felt good about that because we appreciate Sheldon and we appreciate what everybody does. And we thought, let's don't undercut, let's go over. Over is always better. I'm a fan of over.
So I guess my question, it really comes down to the ambulance teams. Are we competing for this or is this kind of like the short straw and whoever, I mean, who, do you want, do this, do they want this service? Do you want to be doing these services?
Hi, guys. I think talking to the other ambulance services, we're good with how the map is now. We're comfortable covering those calls. We're comfortable working together, working off our contingency plan. If Sheldon's not available, working off of our contingency plan for the other agencies to be backup. And just keeping the map the same. That way, there's no confusion and other issues.
I mean, the plan is basically in place already.
Correct.
Right? I mean, other than Archer's no longer in the plan.
Correct. The only thing that we're going forward with you guys now is to accept signing a new 28E agreement for us to be able to do this.
And so to Jared's point, he wants one community to be the lead community, whatever you want to, whatever term you used.
Which we, we can leave the map the way it is and have just the portion that's east of Oriole, Samborn's coverage area. That's fine on our end. It reduces costs for having to change the map later. We're still probably, we're going to be, still have more discussions with Primgar over that rural section on the bottom southeastern portion of the map. We could keep it the same, but it's up to you guys. But I, like I was on the ambulance team back in 2011. I responded to calls, you know, as a Sheldon ambulance team volunteer to Archer back in 2011, 2012 before my wife and I moved.
I mean, the important thing is the agreement. And how that gets divvied up, I don't know. It really makes that much difference to me. I mean, you guys are in the business. You know what's going to work the best. And so, I mean, I'm fully in favor of the agreement. I think that's great that we've got it worked out. And we don't want it to be, I don't, my concern is that it doesn't become a competition between the three. That we want to get there, we want to get there first, you know.
And I've talked to Primgar and no one's going for competition here.
So if we were to leave the map as it is, then what we need to do is just determine who's going to be backup, first backup, second backup. So if we call Sheldon, who's the second backup if Sheldon can't go? So that's what we would, and you know...
But we already have that.
And that's kind of on our end with the contingency plan.
So it's, if you're fine with all of that, I think what, I think what we all, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we're ready to just stick with the map and the agreement that's going to be in place, using what you think is best as far as who's second and third on the list, that's your business. You're better at telling us.
Yes.
So you're seeking our approval of this tonight. Do the other communities have to go through the same process? Is everyone going to have to sign the same agreement?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's going to wash out whether or not they're with, they're good with the agreement or they're not good with the agreement. Question I have for SCAT is, is this going to affect you in regards to financial, financially? I mean, is your budget going to have to...
Do you think it's going to be a burden on us?
Yeah.
I do not think so, honestly. Because last year, you can already see, we covered the three calls already and it didn't hurt our budget at all, so.
Okay, now then how about the human resource, all the folks that volunteer? Is it going to put a burden on that that we're going to have to deal with?
Sure. Before, you know, when all this came about, we did have extensive discussion at our meetings about it. And all the members are in agreeance. This is what we should pursue.
And each community is going to have to ask the same two questions I just asked, correct?
Correct.
Before they approve it?
And I think most of them, all of them have, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I did want to make you guys aware, I met with the supervisors yesterday. So another item that I talked to them about was creation of a new EMS advisory committee, which had more discussion. I proposed the idea last week and then I revisited it yesterday. So the EMS advisory committee, the goal of that committee would be to look at current needs, future needs, EMS system development. You know, where are we going to see ourselves five years down the road? Are there things that we can start doing now? Which, you know, part of that discussion could be the financial component. Over the county contributions right now to the O'Brian County EMS Association, could that be modified, changed? One of the changes that I proposed yesterday was increasing the amount that's reimbursed for mileage from 10 cents per mile to 20 cents per mile. So that was proposed yesterday, which that's based on per ambulance. So each ambulance, we count the miles annually. And then I ask claims to be submitted from the ambulance services. So right now, SCAT 1 and SCAT 2, the miles do count for both. And then, yeah, if a community would have more than one ambulance, we count, we count all that. So that was, that was proposed. We also proposed increasing the amount for EMS education training. So for new EMT reimbursement, we requested some additional funds for that. The EMS advisory committee itself, what I propose for composition is ambulance director or alternate ambulance director from Sutherland, Polina, Primgar, Sheldon, Samborn, and Hartley. The mayor or alternate representative selected by the mayor from each city within O'Brian County. O'Brian County Board of Supervisor representation, one or two. Bryan County Auditor, representation from Sanford Sheldon Medical Center and Baum-Harman Mercy Hospital. And then I'll be participating in those meetings as well. We'd probably be having the meetings in Primgar at the courthouse. The supervisors did not designate a specific supervisor yesterday for who would be on that committee. I foresee several supervisors interested in that because EMS discussion, there's been a lot of EMS discussion over the last six months. And it's been going on for years. So once a formal date's established, we'll send that out. More than likely, it's going to be during the day. We're looking at Thursdays. But, you know, starting off with one, seeing how it goes and then determine how often we'd want to meet. But just wanted to let you guys know about that, so.
I guess I see just your comment, a meeting during the day. A lot of these people are volunteers, ambulance directors, mayor, council. I think you need to look at your time of meetings.
Okay.
Maybe the paid staff needs to come at night. So I'm just throwing that out there. When you say it's going to be an afternoon, there's a lot of us that are in the, you know, ambulance service, EMS service, fire service that work during the day. They're volunteers.
Thanks, Jared.
Other questions for me? Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I would recommend that the council provide some, provide direction on the drafting of a 28E agreement per the discussion that we've had tonight. It sounds like we've reached a consensus. And, you know, Mica, you want to help me summarize this, but I think you probably have what you need to work up a draft.
The one thing I would need clarification on is, using the existing map, my understanding is that a small portion of the city limits of Archer is in the Samborn territory. Is that correct? And so is it, you're understanding, Jared and others, that Samborn would be number one in that area?
On the east side of Oriole, you said?
Yep, correct.
One house?
There's one home and then the library.
Okay. That's right, in the library.
That's all we needed to know.
So if, on that side of the street, we could change. So if you wanted to have the west end, you know, the west side and the east side both be Sheldon, that could be changed. It wouldn't be too difficult to change that street span to show who's primary if that affects the 28E, but...
I think we can do it either way. You know, if you're going to be making other changes to the map, it's just one of those things that you can take a look at and see if it makes sense to do or not.
Sure. Okay.
So then, Mayor, are you looking for a motion along those lines of what Sam was talking about?
If Mica, you have everything that you need to continue with the 28E, so we would need a motion.
Mr. Koike and I and the City of Archer would work together to put a draft together for circulation and input from the various cities and then subject to final approval by all three councils, four councils.
So our motion would be for them to continue the forward work with this. With the agreement, the proposal that Archer has brought forward as far as the 350 and the cap of 3,000, the map, and what's in place as far as precedence of one, two, three backups, et cetera.
Should decide on a term. I think in three years, is that the consensus, the three-year agreement? With an annual auto-renew clause? Does that sound right? Okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I would say if any of the jurisdictions present have concerns about the basic parameters of the agreement as discussed tonight, let us know now. Otherwise, we'll work through it in the drafting process.
So yes, Greg, if we could have that by motion.
Then I would move that we direct Mica to continue those efforts in the drafting of this 28E agreement, encompassing any parties, necessary parties involved, including the city manager, any others that are necessary. Support.
Any further discussion or questions? Thank you again, Archer, Samborn, Primgar, everybody that's here to share. And we thank you for all the time that's been put into this. This has been going on a long time. It's nice to be moving a little bit more forward with it. So thank you for coming out and being a part of our meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Eggers.
Hi.
Heels.
Hi.
Camel.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Ken.
Hi.
So we have the proposal direction. And now we'll talk about the bidding of the Archer ambulance. And I go ahead and invite you to read us some of that, Sam.
If the council was interested in bidding on the ambulance, so it'd need some direction on that. I think at this point, you can just table part C.
And bring it back another time?
I don't think it would be brought back because of the deadline.
February, February 28? February 28?
I would think we would have to have some more discussion within the city departments before, I would feel comfortable as a councilman to give direction. Because I think there's some inner department things that need to be discussed.
Yeah, I'd like to see it come to us as a recommendation from the city departments.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question for Richard Ludick, the council member from Archer. Richard, you had had some conversations with the county supervisors and asked them about purchasing the ambulance. And you've mentioned that the other night at the Archer meeting. Would you mind talking about that tonight?
Yes, we were talking about it as a group. And we thought about, I went to the county board meeting and I proposed that possibly in the county budget, right now, there is $20,000 set aside earmarked for Archer. And so my proposal to the county board was, would they consider using part of that money as making a bid to purchase the Archer ambulance? And then it would actually belong to the county, it'd be a county ambulance. And then the county board could then decide where that ambulance was to be used or placed at. And that was the proposal. Right now, the ambulance is being housed in Samborn. That's where it is now. And so there was a really positive discussion from the county supervisors over that. And they are for consideration. But that was that point of the discussion because, once again, we, we're looking at sharing and collaboration. And that just struck us as really good because then if there's a point where Sheldon needs a third ambulance, it's available through the county. If Primgar needs a third for a timeframe, that's available. If Samborn needs it for a timeframe, that's available. So, and that's still up to them for discussion. But personally, I would really like to see that. Because then everybody benefits. Number two, that money's already set aside. So there's no out of budget, nothing. It's just, I just see it as a win-win-win situation all across the board. So that's what I proposed at the county board last week.
Do you know when you might hear back from them on that proposal?
No, no, I don't. No. I wish I did, but no, I don't.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Good question. Thank you for that update, too. So, yeah, we can table that and if needed, we'll bring it back after we pursue further information. And like Greg or Tom said, they'd like to see that recommendation come from those parties that would need that or benefit from that or look into that if it's needed. Anything further then on our ambulance discussion? Thank you, everyone, for coming to town. It's been a good discussion. Look forward to it continuing to move forward. And on that note, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Ken.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Camel.
Hi.
Heels.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Thank you. We are adjourned.